Good evening, everyone. This is the Lakeville Select Board meeting, also acting as Wage and Personnel Board when needed, from a remote location, February 8th, 2022, 6:30 PM. Is anyone other than Lake Cam recording this meeting? I don't see anything coming up in the chats, okay. In accordance with provisions allowed by Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, the February 8th, 2022 Public Meeting of the Lakeville Select Board will be held remotely. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/LakeCam. You should not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date. www.lakecam.tv backslash. So, at this point, I do see a quorum for the Finance Committee, so I will have you open your meeting, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I will call the Lakeville Finance Committee meeting to order at 6:31 PM. Katie?
Present.
Adam?
Present.
Larry?
Present.
And Darren Beal's present.
Okay. Thank you. So, tonight is the second night of our annual budget meetings. We're in the full swing of the FY 2023 budget, preparing the budget for town meeting, which will be in May, I believe. So, last night, we met with the Accounting Department, the IT Department, the Town Clerk, Human Resources, and we reviewed the Town Administrator Office and Select Board Office budgets. Also, last night, we got a really nice summary from Todd Hassett, who's our Town Accountant, and comments also from Ari. We did come away from the meeting last night with a couple of questions. Did everyone receive those answers today?
Yes, I did. Thank you very much.
Do we want to go over those, or is everyone satisfied with the answers that we've got? Basically, there was a question on what made up a specific line item under public buildings and grounds. And we did get a summary today on what that is. Everything from contractual services to pre-employment screenings, energy consulting, ancillary expenses, including occasional oil deliveries contracted worked at Ted Williams. That's pretty much beginning in FY 2021. Pre-employment expenses were redirected to the Human Resources Budget. The Energy Consultant was moved to the Select Board's Budget. And the other ancillary expenses were mostly redirected to their appropriate departments. No money has been spent from that account in FY 2022. The proposed budget for that account is intended for unanticipated facilities expenses. So, everyone satisfied with that, correct?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, all right. So, let's, I guess, jump right into it. And I believe we have Chair of the Board of Assessors, John Oliveri, with us. So, John, I don't, Mr. Chair, I don't know if you want to go over your budget or how you want to do it.
Thanks, Chairman. I guess, I'm assuming everyone has a copy of the proposed FY 2023 budget of the Board of Assessors' office.
I think it's 2019.
So, I mean, it's pretty simple, I would think. There's no drastic changes in any line items. The, obviously, the salaries are standard and they're contracted for the employees, the two employees that we have. The only items that proportionally look like they're up would be GIS service and map upgrades. Those are up 19.2% and 50%, but again, that's proportionally because it's only a little over, I think, a little over $3,000. And those numbers are up only because with the growth and the number of plans coming into town and some upgrades and whatnot that potentially may be done to our GIS system in regards to the mapping and whatnot. It's a new potential data layers, including zoning layers, a zoning layer. That would be the only reason for those increases. But overall, I think the budget is pretty straightforward. We got rid of a couple of line items like printing and motor vehicle supply just because we've always had a very small incremental amount budgeted, but we never end up using it. So, we just took those off to get rid of them. No reason to carry them forward if we're never using them. And we haven't used them even prior to 2019. It's been quite a while since we used those line items. So, that's about it for my presentation. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
All right. Does anyone from the Finance Committee have any questions for the, on the assessor's budget?
Hey, John, I have a quick question on the salaries. Although they're only up 2% over, since 2023 to 2020, they're up 13% or $11,000. And over the last three years, it's been 2%, 7%, 4%. Is that just hourly wages? Is that any type of merit increase? What's the increase, although not a lot of money? I'm just curious what the annual year-over-year increase has been.
Honestly, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but they're both contractual, they're based off of contractual obligations. So, this, we don't, there isn't anything, I guess, merit-based to your point where we're offering them additional amounts or whatnot. It's, there's a schedule, maybe is the best way to put it, that their increases go up based on, I want to say it's contractually from a union standpoint, that those raises are based off of.
I might be able to help with this.
Yeah, Ari, go ahead. You can probably explain a little easier or a little smoother than I am.
Adam, I think the main thing you're seeing is the hourly wages on the clerk, for the clerk. That's a part-time position. What's basically happened is that it's an hourly position. And they, in 2020, 2021, they underspent the budget. So, it wasn't so much the budget went up, but that they underspent the budget in those years. If you look at the number from '22 to '23, it goes up by the 2%. It's filled now for the year. I don't believe they had it filled the entire year in particular time. So, that probably, that will explain.
Okay, yeah, because I was just noticing, especially for the specialist position, the last two years went up 2%, but '20 to '21, it went up 5%. And I don't know if that was specifically to some type of wage increase due to leveling for the position. And then it just, it was an annual merit increase of the 2% going forward.
I think it was just that when they, as they, the time they charged to that slot.
Okay. Thanks, Ari.
Sure.
Anyone else have any other questions from the Finance Committee? All right. I do have a question on the overlay, but, which isn't right here, but as long as we have John with us. But I'll open it up to the selectmen first to ask any questions on the assessor's budget. Anyone?
Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you, John.
All right, Lorraine, you can go.
Oh, I didn't have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you. I was good.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, Rich.
John, I got a couple of questions. As you know, the GIS software and updates, I know you mentioned zoning, but there's also other areas and data layers that need to be added to the databases. And, you know, everything from wetlands to, you know, water lines to gas lines and so forth. First of all, are you, the job department, responsible to do that, number one? And number two, is there enough money in the budget on the GIS to do those things?
Is our department, I think, the best way to describe it, we're the department that facilitates it. Obviously, we don't use it. So, it's kind of an effort from all departments as far as whether it's fire, building, highway, as far as what they're looking to put into it. We have had a number of conversations over the course of time. I honestly don't believe we've ever formally said exactly or formed a consensus on exactly what we need. That's why there is a little bit of an incremental increase there because as we, as these things come up and, you know, it's decided as a town, as a unit, what we want to do. We could put more in the budget. I don't know exactly off the top of my head if we had a wish list of everything we want, included in GIS, what that total number would be. But I'm more than happy to find out what it would be to completely build it out as much as possible, as much, or maybe as much as for what we may need for that wish list, so to speak. I don't really have a specific answer on what the total number would be at this point. Again, it depends on how much you want to add to it.
So, the question, John, would be then, who do we go to? Is that you or somebody else, or?
I will, you know what? I will take responsibility for it in the sense that there is no one person to go for. And when I say responsibility, not that anyone has done anything wrong, but someone needs to facilitate and coordinate that. And again, it's a variety of departments who use the information there. And, you know, if someone requests it and wants it, and we go through the process of getting approval for it, we can do whatever it is. But I am more than happy to reach out to the departments, find out, you know, and kind of get the ball rolling again on what exactly everybody wants. And then we can execute putting that in place or putting the numbers together, bringing it back and getting approval to put it in place, a budget for it.
Ari, can?
I was supposed to weigh in on that, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I think there is a need for better coordination when it comes to the GIS layers. And I've had some conversations with Nate about that, as well as with John and Harold. We're in the process of putting together a proposal to look at the PRPA money to import some of the layers that are relevant to ARPA, as well as do a flyover, both of which would be eligible expenses. But I think there's also a need for coordination. And that's something that I've noticed, especially in the last, just recently, it's something that is an area that we need to focus on. So, it's on my list. Building some type of structure for that.
Excuse me, there's a number of things that need to be added.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't know.
Right, I think some things we'll be able to do with a combination of, you know, existing budget and ARPA, if the board so approves, because it'll be eligible. Other things, we'll have to come back and, you know, with the proposal, but we're not ready to do that right now.
I do just want to agree with John on this one, just from sitting in the same, on the same board for a while. I want to say that it does fall on the assessors to sort of keep tabs on it. But like John said, the assessors aren't necessarily the ones using it every single day. So, you know, I think it would be a good, good thing, Ari, to coordinate. Because I do think the responsibility, John, I don't know if we had a training or a seminar or something that we, and that's what they had said, that it's supposed to originate with the assessors. But in fact, we're doing it for everybody else, so.
We're kind of like the gatekeeper. We need to initiate it, but we initiate what other departments need. We're not just going to go and put stuff in place on our GIS if no one's going to use it. I mean, that's not really.
I also believe that several years ago, there was a changeover in software, the reason for GIS, I recall.
Yes, there was.
That's caused some bumps from what I've heard as well.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Yep.
My second question is that, you know, last year, we appropriated $30,000 to upgrade the vision software, John.
Yes.
What's the status of that project?
We actually just received the contract from them. I want to say within the past week, if not a little bit more. So, the board, when we meet in the next couple of weeks, it's going to discuss it, make a recommendation. And it's on schedule to happen sometime over the next few months.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anything else to add, Ari, to that?
No, ma'am.
Okay. What about any other questions, questions for the assessor or John? No? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Are you good with me for the evening?
I believe, actually, I just wanted to, you know, just make sure, and I'm pretty sure in the budget, it's $250,000. That's going into the overlay, I think. Is that?
Yeah, we, yeah, we don't foresee anything out of the norm, if that's your question.
Yeah, no, nope. I just want to be sure that, you know, we're all in agreement that, you know, that we should be funding it and, you know, funding it properly and everything else. So, okay, all right. I think, I think that's it. We're good.
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
All right. Next, I thought we had Will Corey, but there he is. Hi, Will. Hi, Will Corey is our Veterans Agent. He takes care of all the veteran services. I believe that part of the budget is on page 59. So, I don't know if you just want to dive in or if you want to go over it with Ari or how you'd like to do it, Will.
However, however you guys are doing it, I'm pretty easy.
Okay.
I kind of try to figure out a percentage to kind of go up by. In last year, they was only, they only worked by 1%. But, you know, this year, with social security and all that stuff being pushed up to 5.9% and DVS was talking, well, we're going to have to make a big jump. I figured, well, I'm going to split the difference. And I tried to stick around 3%, 3.2, 3.3 in that area with my figures. So, but that's all for an adjustment, so.
Keeping an eye on that as well, Madam Chair. The cherry sheet numbers that came out were a bit lower than we expected. So, you know, driving off of that is 75% of the total would indicate a lower number. But there's some, I'll make it revised.
Okay. All right. Does the Finance Committee have any questions for Will? I don't see any.
Yeah, actually, Madam Chair, I have a question. Sorry, this goes back to 2020 and 2021, where the figures for the benefits and that's benefits fuels quite low compared to 2020 and then a big jump in 2022. Is that, and we may have talked about this in prior years, so I apologize. Is that related to COVID or why the benefits dropped so much in 2021?
People come and go. I mean, some people die off, some people move to other towns, and then I pick up other people. And, you know, some people, they need more of a benefit than others. You know, it's a need space program. So, and one thing that was kind of being put into it was that with the death benefits, they moved it up from a maximum of $2,000 that would have went out, and they doubled it to $4,000 on a death benefit. So, who knows how much you're going to get hit on that stuff during the year. But most of my people, they actually own their own properties. And with that being the case, they really wouldn't be qualified to go and get those benefits. But there are, you know, indigents coming down and, you know, I just try to do my best as far as guessing on it.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else from the Finance Committee, questions? All right, Lorraine, questions?
Oh, I'm good. Thank you very much, Will. It was nice to see you.
Good seeing you, too.
All right, and Rich?
All set, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Oh, good seeing you.
This is, this is the time that I, you know, sometimes we only see some of the department heads at an actual meeting once or twice a year. And, you know, again, well, I think we all, all know how much work you're doing in the background to take care of the veterans. And, you know, I think you do a wonderful job. Like you said, it's not always easy. People come and go. But, you know, I try to always make sure to let folks know, too, that you're located at the Council on Aging at the Senior Center, just in case anyone's looking for you. So, I appreciate you being here tonight, and thank you very much.
Well, that's what I'm here for. I mean, I do that radio show that I do every week to try to get information out there for people. Sometimes I wonder how many people are listening.
I watch, Will.
You know what? All it takes, all it takes to make it worth it is if you're reaching one person, so.
Exactly.
You know, so, yeah.
A lot of, a lot of the people that are listening, they may not be veterans, but they may know a veteran. So, we're always trying to stress that something that we're trying to get the information out there, get it to a veteran.
Yeah, yeah. And the most.
Because that's, yeah. Chapter 115 takes care of not just veterans, it takes care of their families.
Right. And the most important thing is if you don't know if you qualify, just come and see you, and you'll help.
I'd rather go through the process and find out that you don't than, than, you know, then you could qualify and not get the money.
Right. Okay.
It really makes a difference.
All right, thank you. Ari, any comments on that? We, okay, all right, thank you, Will.
Oh, that's it? I'm done?
Yeah, all set. You're done. Have a nice evening.
Okay, bye-bye.
Okay, so, next on my list, I believe, is animal control. And I believe.
Yes, ma'am.
We have David Freitz on the phone with us.
On the phone, yeah.
Yep. Page 49 for the rest of us. So.
I'll give you a quick overview, and then Dave can chime in. The only, the only significant increase in the budget is some reallocations here and there of various kinds, but the bottom line actually goes down a little bit in the non-personnel budget. The only major significant increase is in callback stipends in '23. Dave may be willing to talk about this a little bit, but it's been, we can't find the time that they were increased last. So, on the stipend rate for, for the, for the callback, for the, for the on-call people is very low. And so, we're not certain what that's going to look like yet. And that will be coming back to you with a proposal in the near future. But we wanted to keep, put a number, a modest number in there as a, as kind of a placeholder.
Okay. Does anyone from the Finance Committee have a question? Okay. Lorraine?
Oh, I'm good. Thank you.
Rich?
All set, thanks.
Okay. I know Dave said that we're still collecting donations on behalf of Betty White. So, I know he's been working hard at that. So, Dave, would you like to say anything to us?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I would just wanted to go up on the stipends for the callback ACOs. Other than that, my budget is pretty good.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, and I think, I thought we talked about that, right? We did that.
Yeah, there's never been, no, there's never been an increase. They've have, it's been the same since 2006.
Okay, since 2006.
We have, we have a year. I couldn't find it.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right.
I suppose I'd like to put like $25 per shift, if I could. That's all, I didn't want to make it a big increase, just, you know, just enough to cover their gas to come back and forth.
Yep. Okay. All right. All right, thank you, Dave. Any other comments, Ari, on this?
No, ma'am.
Okay, anybody? All right, okay. Thank you, Dave. Moving right along, we have.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. We have Kelly Howley with us on the Council on Aging.
Hello.
Welcome to the buzz, to the budget night.
Thank you.
I don't know if you want to just go through some of it for us.
Page 56.
Yeah, page 56. 56, or, yeah.
My overall budget is only up about $700. It's not a lot of difference from last year. I don't know if you have any questions on the actual budget piece.
Kelly, could you give an update on that outreach position?
Absolutely. So, the service incentive grant, they call it the SIG grant, is from the state Elder Affairs. We've been awarded that. It's a three-year contract, and we've had that in place for about six years now. There's some changes going on with the SIG grant. They changed most of the monies to a pool and a lottery system. There are, I'm told, still some funds that will be coming down, and we possibly could have access to them in the way that we have prior. But we won't know that until they finish the budget, the completed budget, the state budget, you know, maybe closer to the spring or the summer. So, we're not really sure if the position, the outreach position that we have will be funded by that. That's traditionally what funds her pay. So, there is, I spoke with Ari and, you know, to try and figure out what we would do because we might not get that answer for a little while. So, that's why it's in there as possibly funded by the town. Traditionally, the town has left $5,000 as a line item for that position in case the funding that we did receive from the SIG grant, you know, in prior years, ran out before the end of the fiscal year. So, there's been $5,000 each year, you know, in that line item that has gone back to the town, you know, just in case. So, this year, hopefully, it will be the same if we're able to be funded. But if we're not, we just wanted to have a contingency in place.
Okay. Um, does anyone from Finance Committee have a question?
Ellie, I had a question on two of the positions. And I may have forgot from last year, but you have an hourly wages FT clerk. Looks like that got cut down from 2021 to 2022, and this admin assistant got opened up. Is that the case? And also, can you speak to the jump of 5% increase from 2022 to 2023? Because I'm noticing the 3% in the director's salary. So, I'm just wondering what made the 5% jump year-over-year for the new position?
So, the, it was two full-time clerks that we had prior to the administrative assistant position that was put in place last year. And those were lumped together usually as like clerk pay, but that was two salaries together. So, when the administrative assistant position opened up, they were separated out into two different line items. So, that was that one, and that just took place the beginning of the fiscal, this past fiscal year. And the other piece, I'm sorry, was the jump in.
The year-over-year from 2022 to 2023, that admin assistant role went up 5% in pay. Is that an hourly rate that you're just gauging, that there's going to be more overtime in 2023?
I'm guessing, there's not going to be more overtime. That percentage jump, I think that's for the just regular increases, because.
Steps, wasn't it, Kelly?
It was what? I'm sorry.
Steps, step increases, wasn't it?
Yeah, this regular step increase. It wasn't anything on my part. That was from the step chart.
Okay.
Anybody else from the Finance Committee? Okay, Lorraine? Anything?
No, I'm good. Nice to see you, Kelly.
Nice to see you, too. Thank you. I do have a review, if you want me to give you a quick overview of what's going on at the center. But if you want to just move along, that's fine, too.
Let me just ask Rich if he has any questions.
I'm all set, Madam Chair.
Okay. Um, yeah, do you have just a quick overview you could give us?
Yeah, right now, since we've reopened to the public this summer, it's, you know, things have been steadily increasing at the COA. Our numbers are down as far as what we're allowed to have for participation. But these seniors really appreciate being able to come in and get the services that they need and take place in some programs. And we're hoping to upscale a little bit more this spring, as the numbers hopefully go down. So, and just I want to thank everybody for their support between the Board of Health and the janitorial staff and Ari and, you know, just all keeping in contact and getting through this time. It's just enabled us to stay open when a lot of centers weren't able to stay open. So, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Excellent. How was the blood drive, as long as we have you here?
Most successful ever. We. Uh, most successful ever. We, uh.
Really? Oh, that's great.
The blood and they were, um, all the appointments were booked. They had Watkins as well. So I'm hoping to plan another one this summer to help out. It was really great. Thank you.
Oh, good. That's great. Thanks. Just got us the information and we will advertise it for you. All right. Ari, any comments on this budget?
On, yeah, there you go. I was having trouble.
Okay. All right, Kelly. Thank you very much. Thank you for all you, all you ladies do over there. Senior Center is super important. Um, nice to know that, you know, and, and that's where Will's, Will is, the outreach, everything. It's a really important place. So thank you very much.
Yeah, we appreciate having it all in one place and thank you so much. We enjoy what we do. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you. All right. Next, I think we have Jamie Viveros for the library. Is that?
I don't think she's on yet. We're running.
I saw her earlier.
I just sent her a text.
She was here.
Yeah, she was here.
I believe that may have been Will. I think he used the computer at the library and it.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I just sent her a text.
Okay. I thought Erica was on here too, but I'm not seeing her here either. So. I don't want to go too far out of order.
Okay. Here comes Erica.
Here comes Erica.
We can do that one.
Okay.
Jamie's coming in.
There's Jamie. All right. We'll stay in order then. All right. Jamie, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Hey, hi. Um, all right. So we are ready for the, um, library. Ready when you are.
The, there's actually, this would be two members of the board here too, cause we weren't scheduled until seven-thirty.
Okay. So then do you want to wait?
Um, sure.
Okay. We can do that. We can go to the, um, treasurer tax collector. That's fine.
Okay.
Do you want to see if you can bring them on in the meantime?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. We can go to Erica. Are you ready for us?
I am.
Okay. So to everyone, I know we met you briefly when you were, um, hired. Uh, but again, this is Erica Korea, our new, still new, I guess we can call you treasurer tax collector. Um, I've been hearing all good things about your work and loans and everything. So do you want to give us an overview of the budget?
Yes, I would. And thank you for the kind words. I appreciate it. Uh, so I just wanted to go over, there's really two, uh, main items that have, um, gone down actually. Uh, the, uh, financial services, um, because of obviously, um, me being hired. So we were able to eliminate that line item with Angela. And then, um, a decrease in the hourly wages for the clerk. Um, Jean, as we know, Jean retired in November. Um, so when we were hiring, obviously we were hiring at a, um, a lower pay scale than we were paying Jean. Um, I did, if, you know, you don't mind, I do want to give a shout out to Jean. Uh, she was amazing and she's greatly missed.
Yep. She is great. Yep.
Um, yeah. So those are the two, um, major items that changed. Um, I do have a few highlights for the office, um, if you don't mind that I just go over really quick. Um. So I just, uh, finished, uh, revising the cash handling, uh, policy. So I will be distributing that to the department heads at our next meeting. Um, we just sent in the WAPH, um, septic loan to, uh, the, uh, Clean Water, Mass Clean Water Trust. Uh, and I'm very excited because that's a zero percent interest, um, on that loan. So I'm very excited for that. Uh, we've been tackling some, um, tax title, um, issues and I've actually set up about five payment plans. We actually just had our most recent one called today. Um, and I was extremely happy because one of the payment plans is seventy-five hundred dollars a month, um, and that should be paid off in one year. Um, and then also, um, having, uh, I'm working on cross-training the office so that if anybody goes on vacation or is out sick, especially now with COVID times. You know, nobody really wants to hear like that person's out sick or whatever. So working to cross-train and, uh, set up, uh, manuals for the office.
Okay. Um, yeah, that's, uh, that's, that's something that I've always, you know, wanted us to see. And we're, we're, we're sort of attaining that goal by having the two floaters. You know, that could at a minimum come in and answer the phone in your office, but having cross-training that goes on, you know, even.
I have to say, when I was sick and, you know, Devaney helped out, uh, it was invaluable. I can't even thank you enough for that. Yeah. I was really stressed being at home and, and not being able to be in the office. So thank you.
Don't tell him I told you so, but I think the town administrator did a couple hours in the office.
It's a great group. It's a really great group.
Yeah. Um, all right. So I know that, um, going to, back to the, the actual budget. So that's where the longevity. Um, that was because Jean retired. So, um, so that's where that longevity comes out. Does anyone from the Finance Committee have any other questions on the, on this budget or on anything that Erica? Um, had to say.
Can you just confirm for me that the increases salary of twenty-eight, twenty-eight percent is a direct offset of the financial services expense going away?
That is correct.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay. Lorraine, anything?
Oh, great. Thank you. Very much, Erica. Good to see you too.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Rich. Sorry, Rich.
I'll, I'll send that, Jim.
Okay. Um, Ari, any last comments?
Um, just, you know, I've been real, just briefly, Eric has been terrific coming in and, and grabbing what we had. The, 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 um, learning curve was not nearly as steep as, 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 as somebody wasn't as experienced as her. So it's been a really, been a really good hire for the town.
Yeah. Um, and, uh, I do know too that the tax title stuff is just something that you really have to stay on top of. And, um, you know, I, I know it's difficult. Um, it's difficult for people. It's difficult for people in the office. Um, so just to know that you're working on that with folks and doing the best, you know, um, that you can is, is, is really a step in the right direction. So I appreciate your efforts.
Not sure, not to belabor, but I'd also be remiss if I didn't mention how helpful Paul has been through this process of getting Eric on board. She really has been terrific in working, and the, the two of them are working really closely together.
Yep. Yeah, I agree. Yeah. Yep. Yep. That's, uh, that's great. I mean, the office, I think, is running really, really well.
Yeah.
Um, very smooth, um, transition. So thank you very much. All right. So I guess no one else has questions. So. Have a nice evening. Oh, hold on. Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, Ari, um, the debt service, are we going over that with Todd?
Um, so Todd went over it a little bit on the, during yesterday, last night. Yeah, you, you got into that in some detail. I don't know if you want to visit that at some point or what, what you, how you wanted to handle it.
Well, um, I think we should. So the Finance Committee knows, you know, the changes in those debt schedules. There's been a number of things that have been paid off. You know, this year and, you know, what the plan is, you know, going forward, but we probably should wait then for Todd.
Yeah, I mean, I could be mistaken, Rich, but I think he did go over that last night. Um, but, but we can bring it up again. It's fine.
Okay.
All right. It's fine. No problem. We can talk about tomorrow. We can, we'll do it in connection with the, uh, with the CIP.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments on that though, Erica, before you go or?
Um, I honestly, I haven't given it a look to prepare for tonight, but I would be glad to look it over and whenever you want to discuss it, I'd be happy to discuss it.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right. So, um, I think, uh, we are good with Erica. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you for having me.
All right. Thanks. Yeah, you too. Thank you. Um, okay. So I see Jamie. I see Mrs. Gross. I'm trying to see who else I see. Oh, is Patrick here?
Not yet.
Okay. Um, I know Park is going to take maybe a little bit longer because it's the enterprise fund. So I don't want to then make you. Um, I know we're a little early. Uh, recommendations on what to do from my board members? Ari, should we?
Um. I, I, I'm not sure what to tell you. It's really up to the, the library people.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just, we'll just wait a few minutes. That's all.
I'd say they're, they're posted, but I mean, I guess you could call it a no quorum if you only have one, but I don't know officially on that.
Are you expecting the other two members, uh?
Just one other.
Okay. Um.
I'm, excuse me, Madam Chair. Jamie, did you say you were posted for seven-thirty?
We were posted. Oh, that's a good question. Was it seven-thirty? It might be.
I can check.
I think we were.
Yeah. So if I was at seven-thirty. So I'll suggest, I'll suggest that you do, that you do parks now.
Yeah, we can't go early anyways. So, um, all right. So, uh, here's Joe Kosher right there. Hi, Joe.
How you doing?
Okay. Um, so as we all know, the Parks is an enterprise fund, so may take a little bit longer. Um, so I don't know how you want to do the budget review. If you want to do it with Ari, if you want to do it by yourself, I will entertain either way.
Doesn't matter to me how you want to do it.
Um, okay. I say it's the Park Commission's budget, Joe. So.
Okay. So let's, let's go right to the Park Commission budget. And I'll let it, turn it over to you, Joe.
Well, uh, once again, uh, it's been submitted, the budget looks like relatively flat on the expenses. Uh, from last year, we did have some ups and downs on a few, a few items. Um, big hit was of course the salaries, um, but the, um, other than that, I think Steve was a bit about flat. Nothing really changed on that. For revenues, we fall a little flat. We have a little issue with the, uh, the money from, um, the lodge itself. Where we have not seen what we should be seeing, what we anticipated to see, oh, so far from the, uh, Loom Pond Lodge, uh, just causing some concern. We'll have to see how the second half of the year goes. Uh, and then again, we, we updated a little bit based off of the twenty-twenty-three, based on the contract. Uh, but again, that's going to remain to be seen, uh, going forward. Uh, we did have made some adjustments for, for Clear Pond Park. Um, again, uh, we have to see how the season goes if we, when we open it, be enough people and, and how we have to do that. We still haven't voted on that as a group on how we want to go with the park itself. Uh, so that's a little bit, uh, up in the air. We took some best estimates of what we want to see, uh, for, for the, for Clear Pond Park. Other than that, not much has changed, uh, from the previous year.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions on any of the line items or anything?
Um, I will open it up to the Finance Committee first. Anyone from the Finance Committee have any questions? One, two, three, four. Darren?
Yeah. So I don't have, I, I think the bud, the expense budget's pretty straightforward and actually, um, very reasonable. On the, uh, revenue side, can you talk about last year? I remember when we met last year, um, and maybe the year before. There were some questions about whether it was the park was going to be open to the public or just Lakeville residents. And can you talk about how, how that all played out? And if, um, revenues were what you were expecting going into last year?
Uh, a, a good question. Uh, no, last, last year, uh, the vote was to go residence, Lakeville residents only. Um, we had some issues with staffing, so we only opened five days versus, uh, seven in the past years. And usually we will open ten weeks. We already opened six and a half to seven weeks. Um, so that obviously that hurt us. We did not see the uptick we thought, or we anticipated, but just Lakeville residents only. Uh, our, uh, resident passes were down about fifty percent, uh, and gate fees were down seventy-five percent. Um, so, uh, we haven't voted on it this year yet. We have some proposals in how we want to go. Um, again, uh, we, we, we're going to base it on what last year did not bring in. So we're hoping maybe we can change that for, you know, going forward. And, you know, the idea is obviously do we want to open ten, we want to be open for ten weeks. Um, staffing might be a concern. Um, again, we have to see how we want to do it. Like I said, if we haven't voted yet, that's going to be the next, uh, I think maybe next meeting, the meeting after, we'll be voting on how we want to go. If we're going to keep it residence only, we're going to open it up to, to others or not. And that, that obviously everything depends upon that with the revenue. Uh, the gate fees are the, the, the big moneymakers there. Um, because last year, the last two, three weeks of the season, people were coming, but they already had bypasses. So there was no money coming in. It's, it's very, very limited. So, uh, I'm going to be, uh, talking to the group. Um, I'd be pushing for, um, making some changes to get better revenue coming out of the park. But like I said, nothing's been decided yet. Hopefully that answers your question, Darren.
Guys, thank you.
Good question.
Yep.
Joe, just so the reason you went to residents only was because of COVID, is that correct?
Uh, no. Uh, there was, it was concerned, but people brought some concerns saying, uh, uh, there were some issues with people overcrowding, uh, that Lakeville residents weren't being allowed to get, get in there. Cause other people were there. That was, that was the thought. That was some of the, the feedback we heard. Uh, so, um, and, and then maybe, maybe COVID was in the background, but the main idea was, like, there's a lot of people using the park, people in Lakeville feel they're being squeezed out and they're not, um, they're just, you know, they're not being able to go when they want to go. Uh.
What, was there overcrowding at the park at all this year? As far as you, I know the big ones are probably, you know, you know, fourth of July, those type of.
I mean, this year, but no, it was no, it was, it was, it was the opposite. There's not, not many people there at all. Uh, I mean, once again, it, we anticipate a big fourth of July usually. That's the big, this year we went open fourth of July because we got a late start because I'm getting life guides and things like that. There was an issue with the director. We had to replace it at the last minute. So, uh, we didn't see that big influx at July fourth. Um, but like I said, I deal with it. I, I think if we manage it properly, uh, with, with the flow of people there, we, we can do all right. But again, we have to decide if we want to go, uh, residents only or open up to other people.
Okay. All right. I, I guess as, as a resident standpoint, I guess it would make sense, you know, you want to be able to go to your parks whenever you can. But as, as a business enterprise, you want to, you know, try to, uh, bring in as much of the consumer as you can. So do, do you feel it's best to go back to the way it was where you can let others come in?
Uh.
Do you sell limited passes or have limited number of, uh, gate entries or so forth?
I mean, just speaking for myself, again, I'm not speaking for everybody else because we haven't voted on, reviewed it. Uh, I would like to see it go back to open up to everybody. Uh, if, you know, if we have a problem on a weekend, if there's a big party, we can manage that better. Uh, but again, you know, we left twenty thousand or more on the table, not getting the gate fees like we expected when it was open to everybody. Uh, we didn't see that this year. Uh, so that, that, that's an issue. Like I said, we, we're not going to be able to make money. I don't see with the numbers, uh, if it's just residents only unless something drastically changes and people decide they want to go to the park. But I just don't see Lakeville beginning up, you know, people along bringing in the, the revenue we need.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Um, okay. Uh, Adam, do you have a question?
I do. Um, other, other field rentals, I, I see that down ten thousand from the prior year and almost four from twenty-twenty-one. And it looks like it's trending almost towards the twenty-twenty actuals. Uh, is there a reason why we're dropping it, uh, based on the prior two years that we had?
Yeah, we, we lost some teams, um, that, that weren't coming back to the fields. I, you know, there's a baseball league that we lost. Uh, the, uh, participation is down for baseball. So that was a big loss there, the baseball one. Um, and I guess that we're trying, we're going to, we're going to try to get more, but based on what we saw, it, it's just not there right now. So.
Okay.
That's why, that's why we did that. We're hoping for a turnaround. If we can open up those new fields, maybe we can bring in some extra, uh, sports to those fields to, to, to turn that number around. But right now they're not open, so we can't, we don't want to commit to that just yet.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
Um, anybody else from the Finance Committee have a question? Okay. Uh, Lorraine, any questions from you?
Um, yes, Madam Chair.
Um, yes, Madam Chair. Hi, Joe, nice to see you. You had just mentioned that the, the receipts were a little lower than expected for the Loom Pond Lodge. How, how off are, are we?
Again, you know, I don't have the exact numbers for the next, the exact middle of the year. I, I think we're probably off about 20, 30, about 30%.
Okay.
And, and, and again, I'd have to go to them. I don't want to mislead you with any numbers, but at the halfway point, we're not seeing the, you know, the 125 at all. We're by up to 50, 40, 50 that.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm, I can contribute to that a little bit, Lorraine, if that's okay.
Sure.
It, it's actually been doing pretty well. Between the food services and hall rental, the, it's over 52,000 now as of. February, then another 7,000 for bar rental as well. It's probably about, we're getting close to 60,000. So it may not be doing quite as well as, as hoped, but it's, it's, it's up there. The only thing that's running a little bit short is the hall rental piece. But I am told by the operator that they have, that the bookings have really taken off. I think probably the late start. Because the contract wasn't awarded till late March, had some effect at the beginning of FY22. But I, I, I wouldn't, I, I, you know, all, all the indications are that now they're, that they're rocking pretty good.
And we did bump it up 10,000 for 2023, based on 22 numbers, yeah.
Anything else, Lorraine?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Rich, anything from you?
Yeah, I have some questions. First of all, you know, because the Boston Tavern, you know, the operator there, you know, COVID-19 hasn't helped the situation any, you know, because it, not only did we have. When they started, COVID-19 was at its peak, and then, of course, again, we had similar problems, so. But based upon the numbers that Ari pointed out, you know, there's no reason why we wouldn't be able to make our numbers going forward. Joe, the, the budget that's, that's being proposed here, which is. I believe $214,000 for all the expenses and $214,000 for the revenue. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first question that I have is, is that based upon those numbers. Are you able to fill, fulfill the. The lifeguards and the director?
Are we able to fill that, did you say?
Fill those positions. I mean, you have enough money in the budget to fill those positions.
Uh, yes, we're hoping. We're gonna be, we're gonna be posting them soon, yes.
So, the numbers show that the expenses are 214 or whatever the number is totally. But the revenues say that we can match that and we were able to, we'd be able to fill. The, the director along with the lifeguards for, what did you say, a 12-week period?
10-week period, yeah.
10-week period. So that's, that's, that's not a problem, right?
Right, we, we hope we can get it. We might have to go down to the five days a week based on the availability of lifeguards, so it might not be the, the seven days.
Right, I understand that, but budget-wise, that's not an issue.
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
So, based upon that. You're, you're saying that the revenue showing you're gonna take $8,000 in from Lakeville residents only. Correct?
Correct. Well, yeah, it, it was, some people were talking about adding two towns, so we bumped that up with what we had this past year. Thinking it might be a little bit of influx, but not back to 2020 levels.
Okay, so. We are going to be talking about, you know, some significant improvements that we wanna do to Claire Pond. You know, you know that, okay? And my position as a taxpayer and a resident, it ought to be for Lakeville residents only, and that's just my opinion. Okay, you have your opinion and I have my opinion. I said this last year. So the question becomes that if we were to, the town was able to fund that, this quote-unquote $8,000. To cover the cost of the passes and the gate fees or whatever. Why wouldn't we keep it Lakeville residents only?
Again, that, that's, that's preference of people there. If you look at the numbers, amount of people were there, there were some days, 40, 30, 40 people there. Again, you have, you have, you have to staff the lifeguards, hoping there're gonna be enough people there, so they're standing around. Again.
But, but you said, Joe, that based on the budget, with that $8,000, you can fully staff no matter what happens.
True, yes, but like I said, I mean.
Is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so. Last year was an anomaly, you know, having to do with COVID-19. You didn't open on time, you didn't have staff, you know, so forth. So there's all kinds of problems. You know, associated with that, okay? So. I'm saying, from my perspective, from the town's perspective, based upon the revenue numbers that you have here, okay? These are your numbers, not my numbers. That if we, if we were given the, if we gave the Lakeville residents the opportunity like we did in the past. Of allowing them to go there at no charge. With IDs, of course, and that's what we used to do, and they were allowed to bring in guests, okay? A limited amount of guests or whatever. For $8,000, it'd be our own park and nobody else would be using it. Why wouldn't we do that?
Again, I don't really have the discussion here. I mean, I, again, why, why, why just limit the Lakeville folks? I mean, I like, what we've seen in the past, a lot of people. From neighboring towns enjoy going there. Grandparents bring their grandchildren there during the week. They enjoy going. The Lakeville, people from Lakeville. Quite frankly, got pools. They're not going to the park. They're not going like they were 30, 40 years ago. We're not seeing it.
I mean, what I, what I, what I hear, Joe, is that they didn't wanna go there because there was overcrowding, there was a lot of problems there and, and so forth. I don't wanna get into the particulars about it. Okay, and you know that as well as I do. And if the town, this is a town property, and if you go to the other towns that have similar beaches or whatever, it's for town residents only, okay? So, I don't understand why we wanna open it up to other people and we're gonna spend money. To update the facilities, you know, over the next couple of years, a significant amount of money to do that. And why would we do that to the benefit of other residents?
Okay, so. So let me, let me just understand what's, what you're saying, Rich. You're saying that instead of charging any passes to. At all, the town would supplement that $8,000? For any Lakeville resident to go? Is that correct? Is that what you're suggesting? Okay.
Are, are we, are we running a business here or not? I don't think we're running a business. We're running something for the community and for our communities, for the townspeople of Lakeville. We're not running it to make money here, that I know. I don't think that's what it is. You know, as far as Claire Pond is concerned.
I mean, in, in the past, when we had it open to everybody, we were, we were making money. So, again, it was a business because we were making money off it. Again, this, this, I mean, this seems to be a little off, off topic of the budget itself, but I, I'll, I'll definitely give my opinion. Again, we have a beautiful park here. Without a doubt, I agree with you. A lot of people from neighboring towns have many great memories using it. Why, why restrict anybody? That's my opinion. If we can make it so it's not overcrowding to keep people out, why not share with other towns? They have a great resource that they might not have. Again, the faces of people using it in the summertime, they love it. They're not from Lakeville, but they enjoy going, getting cooled in the summertime, that's all.
Okay, so, so this, I think, I, I understand where Selectmen, the cameras come, select board members, the cameras coming from, but. I think that the actual Park Commission itself still, according to what Joe said earlier, still has a difference of opinion. On whether they want it to be resident only. And I'm not quite sure how we would, how you would work that conversation and, Joe, unless, you know, the three. Select. Board members were willing to, I don't know, someone.
If I could just, I, I guess, I mean, this, this is new to me, this, but if, if, which, uh, Selectmen on the camera is saying, I mean, I, I don't have a proposal from the Board of Selectmen. Say, hey, we're gonna pay for everything. It's gonna be free. News to me, so I've not brought that, obviously, to the commission. We don't know anything about that. We're looking at it. The way we've been doing it to try to make money, so we don't have a loss to the town, so that's.
Okay, so, let me.
Put together.
All right, let me just ask Rich a question. So in what you're proposing, let's just say. If I bring, I'm a Lakeville resident, if I bring a non-resident guest, which it would be non-resident because any resident from Lakeville could go. At no charge with this method, does the guest pay a fee?
Uh, in the past, we didn't do it that way. If you had a car that was coming in and you had, you know, some other kids in there, whatever, and they weren't from Lakeville, they didn't have to pay anything.
Okay, I mean, I think, I think when my kids, when I used to take my kids there, which would have been. I don't know, the early 2000s maybe. I think guests still pay the fee or something, so. Anyway, so that's, you know, I guess that's something that the Park Commission needs to sort of discuss. First of all, I think there is a strong opinion on both sides as to whether it should be Lakeville residents or open to everyone. So I, I think that. I think we need to let the Parks make some decisions here and reach out to Ari. Who can then reach out to us if, if something like that for the Enterprise Fund, if we want, we're going to try to supplement something like that.
And, and when I say, Lee, on that one, if, if the Board of Selectmen are giving us a recommendation, what they're willing to do. So we can make a decision, fine, but that has not been brought up at all. We're looking at what we have. We try to make money or break even, at least on the park and not lose money. That's the focus, what we've been. And that's, that's what we're charging for it now. If they wanna do something different, I, I gotta know about this before we bring it up at our meeting. But we'll, we're planning on determining which way we wanna head with it. And again, I said, this is new to me. The town wants us to pay for it, make a fee for everybody. And again, we gotta figure out, again, my, my caution is, I know a lot of people have a lot of ideas how things used to be 30, 40 years ago, but things have changed. I, I just don't see the people in Lakeville leaving their pools in nice backyards going to Claire Pond. They did 30, 40 years ago, but I just don't see it. Again, a lot of people from outside the town wanna enjoy that, that pond, and that's what, that's what my opinion is. That's what I like to do. But again, pass it by, well, pass it by the commission, we can make that decision now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we, we recommend subsidizing the Park Enterprise Fund by $8,000 to eliminate the fees. For town residents.
I'll second the motion for discussion.
Okay. All right, Lorraine, I'll give you the floor.
Where would we, where would we take the money to subsidize this, Rich?
Uh, very easily. We have a $32 million budget. If we can't find $8,000 in this budget, something's wrong, and I know we'll find it. That's not a problem.
All right, well, I just, I would like to know what you, where you were thinking, that's all. I think that.
If you wanna do that too, but you know. But I'm just saying that we ought to consider that proposal and we'll determine where the money's gonna come from.
Okay. My biggest concern. Is. How do we sort of. Keep track of. Well, I guess someone, the director, would find a way to keep tabs on how many people were coming and going. I guess I'm kinda concerned the management, we're planning for one set of management, knowing the numbers we've had, but if we open it up to everybody. Then I don't want the park to be inundated all summer long and then have people not be able to get in, so I, I mean. I feel like I need a little bit more information, like at its most, how far back do we keep track of numbers? I mean, I'm not against the idea. I'm not, you know, I just need the. I feel like I need a little more information, but. And then who? Even if we agree, then it's still up to the Park Commission to make the final decision, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So right now, we have a motion to just make this recommendation to the Park Commission, correct?
That we would supplement, go ahead, Richard, what's your motion?
Their budget to cover the cost of the fees for Lakeville residents only for the Claire Pond Park.
Can I make one just a request? Could you freeze the motion to direct the town administrator to identify $8,000 for, for the subsidy?
Sure.
Okay, and then, Rich, the only other question I have is what happens if we find that we're at maximum capacity every Friday, Saturday and Sunday? And we have to hire more. Lifeguards to. Handle, I don't know if the $8,000 that we're using for a budget to hire the lifeguards is for maximum capacity? Or if we would need more?
If it was. What, Madam Chair?
Yep.
What would be the difference if they decide they're gonna open it up to outside residents? As far as capacity is concerned?
Yeah, they would hopefully be bringing in more than the $8,000, so they would have more money to hire more lifeguards. And I still, you know, wanna, wanna caution everybody too. We don't know, last year, lifeguards were a real problem, so. You know, I guess that's another one of my concerns, but I still almost feel like. The only decision that's here for the Board of Selectmen is to allocate these funds or offer these funds. The rest of the decision to hash it all out is for the Park Commission. So, you know.
Yep.
Okay, and Ari, you said to freeze the motion until we can identify the funds?
That's what I said. I said, I just, Rich, Rich's motion said to. Include an $8,000 subsidy. I just, Lorraine had a question about how it would be paid for, and I was, I was suggesting that you just direct me to identify the funds.
Okay. Okay, so let's identify the funds and then we can make, we can take a vote on the motion.
Well, we can take a, a vote on the motion. Ari will just let us know.
We'll do that through the course of the process. We have a long way to go and.
Okay, all right.
I think that this will give the Parks Commission an opportunity. You know, if they were to open it up to, you know, to outside Lakeville residents, then that would be additional revenue that they could generate for that line. That would be outside of what the budget was, was said, because 8,000 is, you know, to cover Lakeville. We might not even get $8,000 worth of Lakeville residents participating. We might, we might not, so it could be.
Well, I think the point is that, no, that it would stay Lakeville only.
But that's, that's up to the Parks Commission.
Yeah.
Yep, go ahead, Rich.
Madam Chair, this condition is only if it stays Lakeville residents only. Okay, this is not, my proposal is for Lakeville residents only. This is not to allow additional outside people to generate more revenue.
Um, see, for me, I wouldn't mind if a Lakeville resident brought. Another person from another town and they had to pay a day fee of $5 or something, so. I, I just see so many ways that we can go with this right now. And I, you know, can we, can we actually? Put a condition on? Well, I guess we can.
We can.
Yep, yep.
Can I ask the Finance Committee what they think of my proposal?
Sure, yep.
So, yeah, I mean, I think I can see both sides for sure. I think from a business standpoint, it makes sense to open it up. I think from a community standpoint, it makes sense to have Lakeville residents, and if, if you are gonna have just Lakeville residents, I also think it makes sense to subsidize that. So, I guess it, it depends. So, I guess it, it depends on, it depends on what the Park Commission wants to do. But I, I would say that if it's, if it's Lakeville residents only, that that should be subsidized.
Okay, Adam, do you want to comment?
Yeah, could there be middle ground on this? Could, could, could we meet what Rich wants to do in the long term? But in the short term, maybe even over the next year or two, while this process of building this whole Clear Pond up is done. That we do charge people to go build up a little revenue, help put money towards this renovation. Once the renovation is done and Clear Pond's where we want it to be for the town, we loan it just to the Lakeville residents.
Okay, Larry, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I, well, again, I see both sides as I, as I tend to conversation with Joe. I, I agree with Rich as a, as a citizen and a taxpayer of Lakeville, I guess, yeah, I'd say you want to keep that. As your personal, you know, use not for outsiders. I agree, I agree with Rich on that. I, I'm not sure it's really reasonable. I don't think you're gonna see the revenue, but we're subsidizing, so I guess it doesn't really matter. There's, there's, there's pros and cons. I know Richard said residents only, so. For example, me and my wife who live here, my grandson lives in Kingston. My grandson spends a lot of time with me in the summertime. If I want to take him to Clear Pond, I can't take him there because he's not really resident. And how do we determine if a child's a resident? They don't have IDs.
No, you can take, excuse me, Madam Chair. You can, you can bring in guests like your grandson or whatever.
Okay, all right, that, that makes a little more sense. I was just, when it was just flat Lakeville resident, that was concerning me. Yeah, I mean, that's really up to the Parks Commission to make a decision, but. I don't see a problem with it as long as we can allocate the $8,000 you're gonna need. And, and will it affect other budgets, like food concession and so forth? Well, Lakeville residents more likely to spend money on food concession just because they're closer, I don't know. I don't know enough about the, the history of that park, I'm sure Joe does, so. It's, I guess it's up to them, but I wouldn't have a problem subsidizing.
Joe, can I just give KB a chance?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I think. I like the idea of something in the middle ground maybe, but I also think it's important to look at the numbers of when it was Lakeville for the last year. To get a better idea of if we're gonna do Lakeville only and staff it, and it's not gonna be used all the time, is that now. Kind of a waste of our resources if we're paying to staff it all day and. We have 10 Lakeville residents there, if we could find a medium in the middle ground of kind of having Lakeville residents for free. And charging for outside or hitting a capacity and not allowing outside residents at a certain point. I'm not opposed to being free for Lakeville, but I think we would have to look at the numbers of what that means and if we're gonna end up staffing it for. Very few people, and if that means we should open it back up at some point.
Okay, Joe.
Yeah, again, I mean, I, it, it's a lot of questions I have. I mean, again, we know. Selectmen and the camera mentioned, you know, someone's got a sticker on their car, they can bring a carload. If one person's from Lakeville, all their buddies from wherever other town, can they come in if they're not relatives? Who's gonna monitor that? How are we gonna do there? So, again, you've got young kids at the gates. How are they gonna be doing it and, and without, without fights breaking out? So, again, I can take the information. That the selectman would like to pay for Lakeville residents if we go Lakeville residents. We might decide not to. And say, okay, we're gonna go a different direction. Again, it'll be our decision to make, but we will consider what was put, what forth. I'd like to see it in writing so I can have something to bring to the board, to show them what the, what the thought is. But the, again, we have some proposals we're bantering around right now amongst ourselves, open up to everybody. Someone suggested open up to one or two other towns based on proximity. But we gotta know this soon before we move forward. So, again, I, I, it, we, you know, I appreciate the input here. It's news to me, so I, I, again, my, despite, my stance on is different than, than Rich's, but that's all right. We got, that's, that's America, I guess. I'll bring this back to the board and we can talk about it. Logistics as well, there might be some other nuances, like you said, concessions and other, other people might need lifeguards and, you know, what days are we gonna be open? Things like that. In the past, last year, like I said, it was, it was a bust Mondays and Tuesdays to extremely slow, so we, we just didn't open Mondays and Tuesdays. So, that's something we might have to do as well.
Okay, so the Select Board has a motion and a second to offer the Park Commission. Enterprise Fund, the $8,000 that they are suggesting they need for lifeguards. And that would be to allow for Lakeville residents only to use Clear Pond Park for free. And we are going to approve this motion subject to. Naming the source of where the money's gonna come from, correct? Okay, all those in favor of Selectmen LaCamera's motion, Carboni? Okay, Carboni's eye, right?
Yep.
Okay, LaCamera?
Hi.
Okay, and Fabian, I. So, Joe, Ari will work with you, put that together. And then. I'm gonna watch your meeting.
I bet you will.
And we'll see, you know, I do appreciate everyone's input though. You know, the, the parks are really important around here. And, you know, I think people underestimate how much work goes into it. We do have a lot of parks. And I want us always to be able to use them as residents, but like anything, we know they cost money, so. Okay, so Ari, you will work with Joe on, on that, okay. Is there anything else on the park budget that anyone would like to ask questions of? I don't know that where, are we talking about the capital plan on the parks right now or not? Because I know we're gonna do the capital plan tomorrow night, right?
We are, so if there's anything you want to bring up prior to that, we can certainly, we can certainly do that, otherwise we'll be talking about tomorrow night.
Okay.
At that, at that time, we'll have the appropriate staff too, other than Joe, also we'll have, you know, Nate and Frank out on board as well.
Okay, so I guess my, what I'd like to do right now is just see if. Anyone from the Finance Committee has a question on the capital plan that may be simple that we can answer tonight. Or if it's more in-depth, we can have an answer for tomorrow night. So I'll open that up to the Finance Committee, anybody?
Yeah, I think we can just discuss it tomorrow night with the rest of the capital budget.
Okay, everyone okay with that? All right, okay, Joe, I think we're good. Thank you very much.
I have a few more questions, Madam.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Rich, I thought we were done. Okay, go ahead.
Having to do with the budget itself. I, I want to make sure, Joe, that the Highway Department and Franklin are. Doing what your expectations are, and if there's any issues having to do with the Highway Department at this point.
No, they've been super to work with. I, I work well with Franklin and them, so there are no issues at all.
Okay, there's a couple of other projects that are being worked on there. One is the, the trail. Is that gonna stop this spring or?
Darling Sandal and that, there's a Boy Scouts gonna be working on that, I think this spring, to work on that. There's some money been allocated to that there as well.
And what about the Gramage Playground?
Same thing, yeah. There's some, Darling's got some money raised for that there, so they're gonna be doing some work on that this spring as well.
Okay, so is there any other, I don't, I, I looked at the capital plan and. I know you guys said you were gonna be working on a five-year plan for this year. Based upon the capital plan, is that it?
That's what we came up with, yes.
For the next five years?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, not, no, not, not no one else that filed, I mean, once again, this is just the input we got. I'm sure there'll be more down the road, but this is what we came up with right now.
All right, I. Okay, I guess we'll talk to the plan tomorrow night. I'm surprised that it's. It's really the same stuff that was on there last year.
Yep, we added one, it's why it was at the end, we added blaze. Yeah. Bottom two items were added this year, but to your point, everything else was the same, yeah.
Okay, one of, one of the problems that we see, or that I see. Is, is that the, the repair, the $28,000 that we, the town funded last year for the repair of the tennis courts. How do we get a better handle on that number? Because I don't think $28,000 is gonna do it.
I've been talking to the gentleman over there at the Lakeville Athletic Club, and we think we can, we can do that, what needs to be done with that. With some of the people he knows. Again, I, I gotta, I need with him again, we still think that's, that's doable, that, that number there. We're not resurfacing the whole thing, so we're not tearing it all down. We're filling the cracks that need to be done, and we're repainting this.
Okay, so we have not seen a proposal on that, or what, what that $28,000 is gonna be made up of.
Not yet.
Okay, when are we gonna get that?
Well, we, well, the, we have, we have quotes from last year, we have to update them again based on, you know, a year's timeframe.
Did it, was it also done with prevailing wages?
It was not at prevailing wages, but it was, it was. I, I don't know what it came with in, I think it was like less than $20,000 without prevailing wages. So we have to record it again based on the time we got that. Yeah, and I said, if the information we're getting, we think we can do it for that fee as well.
So, can you provide Ari those copies of those proposals? So we can take a look at those, so he can take a look at it and have Franklin look at it, because Franklin has never seen it, so. And he's, you know, when he originally worked in New Bedford, you know, and running the parks and recreation down there. You know, he's quite familiar with tennis courts. And so I, I think that he's a valuable resource that ought to be used and trying to figure out what needs to be done.
Yeah, definitely, we'll do that.
Okay. All right, I guess I have a lot of questions on the. On the. Plan, the capital plan, but I'll wait till tomorrow night, so. Okay.
Yep, Joe, will you be joining us tomorrow night for the, the capital discussion?
I suggest the same thing.
First time hearing of this, so I, I do not know anything about it.
Okay.
Joe, are you available tomorrow night to, to join in on the capital plan discussion? It's at, it goes around 8 o'clock tomorrow.
I would love to. If you can send me the invite, I'll gladly attend.
I'll forward it to you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
My pleasure.
Okay. All right, I think that's it on parks right now, right? Okay, so now we have the.
I have one more question if Joe's still there.
Um, I think Joe's gone.
Joe gone?
Yep.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, all right, sorry, Rich. Okay, so now, first we were early, now we're tardy. But I appreciate the patience of the library folks. So Jamie, can you introduce who's here with you? And take it away, please?
Sure, Ruth Gross, who's the current Chair of the Library Board of Trustees is here, as well as Patrick Marshall, who's from the board.
Okay. So, if you could just give us, you can go over the whole budget if you want, or however you want to, want to do it.
I figured you already had an overview of the department and including information about our collection services and programs. As part of the budget book, but I'm, I'm just happy to report that we're returning to a sense of normalcy over here. Definitely seeing an increase in foot traffic. There are people coming in, taking advantage of the study spaces. And seating which are open now, like we're fully operational. People are participating in in-person programming. We started outside this summer with in-person programming, in June with summer reading. And now we're using our large meeting room to support us during the winter months. And we're continuing with the hybrid model of virtual programming, so people can join us either in person. Or remotely on Zoom, at least for the adults, like we're, we're offering that option. Just as a quick update of what we're doing. As far as the budget, the, there really isn't very much movement in the budget. The only movement is within the salary lines, which represents funding for the contractual obligations and cost of living increases. So the expenses have been level funded or decreased for next year. And this budget, you know, as it's presented, does reach the municipal appropriation. That allows Lakeville to remain certified in the state aid to public libraries program, which I usually talk about briefly. Just that this program allows for the reciprocal borrowing from other libraries in Massachusetts. So Lakeville residents can either request materials to be sent here to Lakeville for them. Or they can use their library card at other area libraries. So in order to remain certified, you have to. Meet your municipal appropriation requirement, which is really kind of based on the average of the funding over the last three years for the library. You do have to meet certain standards, being open a certain number of hours, not charging for your services. Appropriate staffing, there's kind of a list, but, you know, we're able to meet all of those standards. And then you have to also spend a certain percentage of your budget on materials. So every year, for us, our library of this size, it's, it needs to be about 16% of the budget goes towards materials. In Lakeville, what we do is there is some money in the appropriated budget to cover materials, but we also use. State aid grant funds that we receive, so when we participate in the program, it also. Brings grant funds, you know, direct cherry sheet money to the town, and we use a portion of that to make up the difference. So we've, you know, been pretty good over the last, you know, few years, at least of the time that I've been here to. Meet those requirements and be able to offer full range of services to the community as far as the library is concerned. I don't know if anybody had any specific questions about things in the budget.
Excuse me, Jamie, Madam Chairperson, before we go any farther, I need to call us to order.
Oh, okay, thank you, sorry.
These are called to order at 7. I'm sorry, I can't see it, 7:52.
7:52 somewhere, yep.
Thank you.
Yep, no, so before I open it up, two questions from the Finance Committee. I will ask the two members of, the two Trust Library Trustees if they want to offer any information for us, to us. Other than, you know, we all know Jamie's great with a budget.
I fully support Jamie's sheet here, it's well done and we're happy with it.
Great.
Anything to add myself?
Okay, and I, I do appreciate every year, Jamie, that you go through. The, the explanation of the municipal appropriation and all that kind of stuff. Because it costs a lot of money to run a library and, you know, I, I appreciate that you give us that explanation every year. So let's open it up to the Finance Committee. Does anyone on the Finance Committee have any questions for Jamie or the trustees? Darren?
No, no questions, it's, it's pretty straightforward and easy to follow, so thank you.
Okay, I saw you unmuted, so I wasn't sure if you were unmuted.
I just wanted, I just wanted to acknowledge that it's, that it was a good job and there's, there's no questions.
Okay, great. Anybody else from Finance Committee on that? No? Okay, Lorraine, you're, anything?
I just, again, very straightforward, Jamie, Ruth, Patrick, nice to see you guys as well. This is kind of nice for me because I don't get a chance to just pop in and, and say hi, so. Keep up the good, the good fight.
All right, Rich, anything?
Madam Chair, okay, thank you.
Okay, Ari, anything to add on, on the library?
Oh, ma'am.
Okay, again, I just, you know, want to applaud Jamie's leadership. I know that, you know, you've been through some tough times with. COVID, and more than anything, I know that you really in your heart believe. You know, the library should be open to people to come and read, and I know. You know, the library should be open to people to come and read, and I know that was hard for you as a person. And your staff to, you know, limit. Reading, I mean, that's, you know, contrary to what we all think, and I really do think you've done an excellent job of getting every. You know, getting the library back open again, and um, and and it is, it really is, you know, a- at the core of our community. Um, you know, kids were missing out going to the library. They were thrilled when. It became a new treat getting to go to the library just to pick up books, so really and truly, that to the trustees. And to Jamie, really terrific, just terrific work. I've gotten so many, you know, just people, every now and then, they'll see me around town in the supermarket, and they're like, oh. Thank God the library's open again. You don't realize how important, so. Um, thank you very much.
Very welcome, my pleasure.
Okay, um, so I think we are done with the library, and where's my agenda? We already did.
I have a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Um. Uh. All in favor, are you in favor, obviously? Step down, I. And then favor step up. We are adjourned.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot.
That's okay.
Alright, um, so now I think uh, we can have the Finance Committee, if you don't have any other business.
Yeah, just one item from last night. We have some old business in regards to the Old Colony Budget Subcommittee Meeting. I sent out.
Okay.
Yeah, I sent out the details to the other members. Um, I heard back from one who may or may not be interested. So, I'm just opening it up for volunteers. If not, I can't attend. Um, we will definitely have a representative there, but I wanted to give other people a chance to, to experience that, so. Um, I'm just asking the other members, would anyone else like to attend? It's this Thursday, so it is kind of short notice.
Darren, did you see the, that there's a remote option available as well?
I did, yep, and I forwarded that information to everyone else, yep.
Yeah.
So it is a remote, correct? And what time is it? I'm sorry, I I forget.
Uh, six P M.
Sorry?
Six.
Six P M. Yeah. Um, I I'll, I'll make, I can do the, this one. I don't know if I can make it a regular thing. It's, how many? Um, how many meetings do they usually have? Is it just this one or?
Yeah, I think this is just this one, really.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's just going over the budget, not, not much different than what we're doing now. I'm just, just focus, focus on the school.
And that's for the VOTAC?
Yes, the Old Colony, uh, yes, yeah.
And is there, is there anybody else uh, gonna be there from the town?
I will.
Is it, you will?
Yeah, they asked for a town administrator and a Finance Committee member.
Okay, yeah, if we need someone to uh, represent finance, I'll do it.
Okay, thank you, Barry, for volunteering. Any other business, Finance Committee? Okay, hearing none, do you have a motion to adjourn? Sorry, did I hear one?
Uh, yes. Costing.
And I heard a second from Katie, okay. Um, okay, we'll take a vote, Adam. There's a motion to adjourn.
Uh, so, um.
We're just voting yes.
Yes.
You're good, okay, Katie?
Yes.
Uh, Larry?
Costing, yes.
And Beals, yes. So, thank you. Everyone have a good evening, and we'll see you tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Alright, so on our agenda, we have any new business? Does anyone have new business for us? Uh, old business, any old business? Alright, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
LaCamera, I.
KB and I. Alright, thank you, everyone.